Welcome to Bellingham City Council Committee of the Whole meeting. We've got four items this afternoon. The first is a state legislative review. The city of Bellingham, in partnership with Waukesha County and the Port of Bellingham, contracts with McBride Public Affairs to represent our joint legislative interests of these three governments. Tom McBride and Ben Buckholz will provide a state legislative review of the 2014 legislative session. And I think I'll turn it over to Mayor Kelly to introduce them.
So, two years ago, you agreed to an experiment of sharing a lobbyist between the port, the county, and the city. And personally, I've been very pleased with how this has worked out for the city. It's great to have somebody in Olympia every day that is following our issues and can respond at a moment's notice, though I guess we let you have a little bit of leeway. Because it's very difficult to get things passed in Olympia. And it's also very difficult to avoid having things happen. So, I think these two gentlemen have done a very good job of pursuing things that we want to happen and preventing things we don't. And we have big issues that are coming forward in the next legislative session, which will be another biennial year. And so, I think they're gonna give us an update on how it went, what they do, and some forecast of what's coming. So, I'm glad they have the chance to present.
Okay. Does that work? Alright, I'm figuring out the equipment, too. My name's Tom McBride. I'm here with my partner, Ben Buckholz. And we first want to thank you for taking the time to invite us here today and listen to some of the presentation and feedback about this past session. It's a privilege to represent the city in Olympia on legislative and regulatory matters. We thank you for that. And I think we've accomplished a significant amount over these past two years. There's still a lot of work to be done. And we'll review, as the mayor indicated, a little bit about 2014 and give you a little forecast on 2015. I do want to acknowledge, though, the decision you've made to hire representatives in conjunction with the county and the port. It's a unique situation, and it's been observed by many in Olympia as a good way of doing things. And we do hear frequently that other jurisdictions and areas, regional authorities, look to this model as a way to address some of their needs in Olympia. So, I do want to acknowledge this, the unique arrangement, and you going forward with it. Because I think it's been quite successful, and it's recognized as a new model for people to look at. And also, as we talk about some of the bills in 2014, I do want to say right up front, obviously, we work with the legislators, we work with the policymakers, and the regulators. It's important for us to acknowledge the work of your elected legislators in Olympia from the 40th and the 42nd. They're the ones moving the bills through, sponsoring the bills. And so, we don't always get what we want, but sometimes we get some of what we want, and we'll keep working to get all of what we want and need. But I do want to acknowledge the work of your elected officials in Olympia. So, first of all, just to give you a little landscape, we're gonna talk about today briefly, this presentation will be divided into two parts. One is basically to talk a little bit about 2014, the climate, the general work that we do. And then, we're gonna drill down into some of the bills that we worked on that were part of your legislative objectives, and also, things that will continue on, things that maybe have been addressed in part this year, but need some more work in 2015 and beyond. So, first of all, let me say, the politics in Olympia, as you know, it's a divided control in the legislature. We have a Democratic governor, as you know. For the first time, over the past couple of years, for the first time in a long time, there is divided control in the legislature. The House is controlled by the Democrats by counties 55 to 43. And in the Senate, actually, by party, the Democrats control 25 to 24, but two Democrats have crossed over to work with the Republican Caucus to create what's called the Majority Coalition Caucus. So, the Majority Coalition Caucus does have a controlling number by 26 to 23 votes in the Senate. So, we do have divided control, and of course, that affects the way bills are considered and moved through the process. You know, this is the first time in the number of years that we haven't had special sessions. As the mayor indicated, it's the second year of the two-year biennium, so we didn't have the big budget to push through this year. They're biennial budgets, as you know. But there is a supplemental budget that is considered and passed by the legislature. It's not necessarily absolutely necessary, but it's usually advisable, because there typically are, as you know from your own work, a fair amount of changes that occur. Population increases alone sometimes demand that more money be pushed into certain programs to account for caseload increases. So, a supplemental budget was passed, but as I mentioned, for the first time in a number of years, no special sessions. So, the legislature did adjourn on time after the 60-day session ended. And of course, their work will be busy over the interim in terms of preparing for the 15 session, but also, the elections. All of the House members are up for election this year, and half of the senators are up for election. So, it's a busy election season in anticipation of a very difficult and busy 2015 legislative session on the horizon. I want to give you just a flavor briefly of the kind of work we do. You know, you put together and approved legislative objectives for the 2014 session. We went down and worked on those. As the mayor indicated, things come up that we don't anticipate. And that's one of the advantages in having us down there, on the ground, on the hill, meeting with a variety of people, to learn what is coming up that we don't anticipate, things that might be a threat to the city that we can help educate the policymakers about, maybe we can stop it, maybe we can change it. But what we don't want to have happen is someone move something through the process that's gonna hurt the city. Sometimes, they simply don't understand how some of these decisions impact local governments. So, that's part of our process. And in addition to the things that we all know about, going to hearings, testifying, the things that you see on TVW, there are a lot of ways that we can add value to you through our services in Olympia. The committee structure is obvious. We do legislator meetings to advance the interests of the city or to provide, and/or to provide feedback to issues that are coming up that we're concerned about. But there are also a lot of informal activities, as you could expect. Leadership in all four of the caucuses have individual meetings where they invite advocates to come in to talk about what's of concern to a particular entity, be it a local government or a business or a union, what have you, anything. Anyone can come into these meetings, and we do so on behalf of the cities. We work with legislative staff, committee staff, and caucus staff to explain what's of interest to the city and our interests. We work with Association of Washington Business closely. They have a...
Association of Washington Cities.
Excuse me, Association of Washington Cities closely. They have two meetings every week, one for large cities, of which year one, and one for all the advocates on behalf of city interests. So, we do that. Ben and I split up and cover those on a weekly basis on behalf of the city. And there are also policy committee meetings regularly held about things like water quality or tax and fiscal matters. So, I just throw those out in addition to some of the more common type of meetings and interests that you might think about. There are a lot of ad hoc events, meetings in the hallway, people we see and can share information with to learn information, to bring it back to the city, get feedback about Bellingham's interests related to particular proposals that come up unexpectedly. So, that's part of what we do. And then, before I turn it over to Ben, the last thing I want to say is the budget. The budget next year is going to be a big issue. I think it's interesting, when you think about the way the economy's coming back and how some of the revenues in local governments are ticking upward and things are improving, consumer confidence is inching upward. We've got a problem in the state, because the legislature must deal with basic education funding. It's under the McClary decision, as you all know about, the Supreme Court decision of the state. Just this January, they issued an opinion as to whether or not the legislature was up to date on its work to adequately fund education. And it was not an approving opinion. They're putting more pressure on the legislature to more quickly adequately fund basic education. And numbers that are typically thrown around for next year might be a billion for 2015, a billion for 2016. That's a lot of money. And not everyone agrees with those numbers, but I'm just saying, those are the kinds of numbers that get talked about and used. And I tell you this because when that budget is prepared, and the governor will prepare it in December for considerations, we start in January, it's gonna be a battle. It's gonna be very tough. And a lot of how next session goes will depend on elections this fall, who's in control of what chamber. But it's gonna be difficult. And we're not gonna have the benefit of some of the increased revenues that you might expect in Washington State because of those pressures to fund basic education. So, if there's an elephant in the room, it's education funding. And it needs to be addressed, and it's gonna dominate discussions. And it puts a lot of pressure on the legislature in terms of their ability to pass policy, because new policies typically cost money, as you know. So, that's a little bit of the context. That's the kind of work we're doing down there. I want to turn it over to Ben, where he can run through some of the issues that we're working on proactively for you based on your approval for the 14 session. And then, of course, we're happy to take any questions. Ben?
Thanks, Tom. It's good seeing everybody again. A lot of you came down to Olympia to visit with us in January or February. So, hello to all of you again. I'm gonna start off with a couple of issues that I know are very important to several of you and very important to the city of Bellingham. The first one being the liquor issues in Olympia and the shared revenues between counties, cities, and the state, and how those revenues are used locally to support the budget. And we like to put into a couple categories if a bill or bills did no harm or if they were a positive outcome for the city of Bellingham. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, the liquor issues, there were a couple of bills in the legislature this year, and neither of the bills were passed. However, looking back a couple of years, we noticed that, especially in 2012, the revenues were drastically changed that were sent to the city. So, looking at it in those terms, it was probably a positive that no further damage was done this year to those revenues that were sent down to cities. However, looking forward, there's obviously gonna be some defense that has to be played to make sure that those revenues don't change after October 2015. So, that's one place where we're gonna definitely be looking into the future to make sure that we have a coalition bill and can work with the Association of Washington Cities to make sure that the city of Bellingham isn't injured any further in the liquor distribution. The second issue I wanted to discuss is the marijuana tax issues and revenues from the sale of marijuana. We all know that's a big issue here in Bellingham and is only gonna continue to grow into a larger issue. I believe there were 53 marijuana-related bills in Olympia this year. The super majority of those did not move out of committee. Even a smaller amount made it across, out of committee towards the floor. And in the end, no substantial bills were passed. Sort of a microchasm of the entire session, as Tom talked about. A lot of issues discussed at the front end and not a lot accomplished on the back end of sessions. So, I think, as Tom was saying, that's sort of a bigger picture of what's coming next year. People didn't, the members of the legislature didn't want to put themselves in a bigger hole for the McClary decision coming next year. So, marijuana, the broader coalition was looking for a solution to combining and reconciling the differences between medical and recreational marijuana, and also determining on where those revenue sources, where that revenue would be, how it would be distributed to cities and counties. In the end, like I said, the issue became too great. They couldn't negotiate a deal by the end of session. And so, that is one of those, did no harm, but didn't help us either. So, that's one that will definitely be a big player next year when they're looking for a billion or more dollars for the basic education. I think the next issue I'll go into, in terms, be respectful to your time, is the housing, homelessness surcharge on certain documentation. This is a big financial piece for the city and dealing with homelessness in the city. I think it's about $954,000 a year for Waukesha County and obviously, some trickle-down for the city. That was due to start to be repealed back from $40 on certain documents with the county auditor. It would go to $30, and then $20, and then $10 over the next five years. And this was a conversation that started on day one, maybe even before day one. And as session went along, it became a much more major negotiating piece on both sides of the, both chambers. As you know, Speaker Frank Chop, this is one of his large issues, and he used it to try and get as much as he could for the House members. And it was placed in a difficult place. However, in the end, all those conversations, all those people working on this issue were successful until the $40 surcharge has been extended until 2019. So, it's not an end-all-be-all solution for homelessness in Washington State and even here in the city, but at least it is a help and continues to be that full $40 surcharge One of the last major issues, bills that I wanted to talk about that is on the legislative objective is the Aquatic Invasive Species Bill. Tom and I were put into the center of that conversation with some of the relationships that we have. It just happened to be that some of those relationships were the leadership on this issue, and that worked out really well for the city. In the end, the bill did pass. We were able to get it through the process. Unfortunately, it came out of the House side without the large fiscal note attached to it that we were hoping for. So, it's one of those, we consider this to be a win. However, next year will be probably even a more important part of the conversation to get that, the financial part of that put back into the bill. However, there is a, you know, theory that if you can get the policy part through, sometimes it's easier to add the financial part after that. So, we've definitely got a battle coming up, but I think we have the right relationships and are gonna do our best next year to make sure we can get some of that money for Lake Waukesha. With our conversations here in the city, we know that Lake Waukesha is obviously a source of drinking water. And, I mean, that's the most important reason that any sort of revenue that we can bring in to protect Lake Waukesha is a high priority for what we do in Olympia. So, there's plenty of other bills on the LO. I think we'll sort of summarize quickly. Transportation budget, there was a supplemental transportation budget passed, did very little in changing what happened, what was written last year. You also have to remember, the last budget was released six months before this budget was, so there weren't a lot of changes made. The one positive was that there was another 144-car ferry added to the budget, so that is being built now, which is good for all marine highways and towns and cities on the water. Model Toxic Control Act, not a lot of changes there. There was a push to take $280 million away from model toxics projects, cleanup projects. In the end, that failed. There was a lot of help from members of this delegation on that. Senators Ranker, Erickson, House members Christine Litten and Jeff Morris and Vincent Byes were all very valuable in fighting that fight with us. The Public Works Assistance Account, I'll wrap this up, sorry. The Public Works Assistance Account, as you know, last year, there was a big push to make sure that some of that money was redirected away from projects and into the general fund. There was a large sweep. That was gonna be a permanent shift of revenue. However, a large coalition went to work on that, and we were able to get it, so it is a six-year diversion. Nothing in that changed this session. So, that was something we'd say probably a takeaway of being a positive in terms of public works projects. So, I think that's about what we wanted to cover. I think Tom's gonna do a couple of social services funding issues.
There was a little bit of money in a difficult year, $150 million added to the supplemental budget. A bulk of it went to things like caseload increases, like I mentioned. Some of it went to education, and about $15 million of it went to mental health funding, things like increased number of beds in the facilities around the state. That was a nice add and a needed add in a very difficult fiscal budget situation. So, we wanted to highlight that. And also, just to remind you, you did get a report, end-of-session report, where we went through in a little more detail some of the issues and bills that came through. So, there is some more detail there, and of course, we're happy to answer any questions for you.
Great. Okay, thank you very, very much. We've got Gene and then Michael.
Just a quick question. What did they start the year with as far as a budget surplus or revenue fund this next budget session?
It's 800, I want to say, close to 900 million. I think it's 890 million, 870 million.
But the billions on top of that, right, that they need to find for education?
Yes. And there are some restrictions on how that money can be used. Some of it's sort of locked away.
When's the next revenue forecast come out, in June or July or something?
Should be June.
Is there any expectations? There's hard, nobody knows.
Yeah, I don't think there's, there's no rumors of major change. I think things are pretty much going as expected, little upward tick.
Michael?
Well, I think this question may actually be more for Kelly, because there's been a lot of regional discussion about the highway interchanges, Slater, Smith, Baker View. Do we foresee that the, if there might be a joint lobbying effort, they would use Tom and Ben on issues regarding state funding for some of those highway interchange issues? Do you think that might be something for next year?
Well, we've put, like, the Baker View on-ramp... Before I speak without knowing, let Ted come up here. So that they're part of our tip. So, those are the kind of things when we lobby for money, they lobby off our list. But we, but how it is now, since there's very few earmarks, as there used to be, you lobby for amounts or packages. And then, they're determined by how the local area has decided to spend the money.
So, that'd be a transportation package we'd need to support?
Ted, you want to...
No, Ted Carlson, Public Works, I think the mayor answered it correctly. The real effort's working with WashDOT and through the Council of Governments, our regional transportation planning organization, to identify what the priorities for the area are. We've done some of that already. One of the projects you mentioned, specifically the Baker View interchange, as well as Slater Road interchange with I-5, both of those projects are on the regional top five in terms of priorities for our area of planning. It's just gonna be part of the transportation package discussion. I think what we need to do is work with WashDOT to look at the improvements that need to be made in the limited access, because that is a key to us as we look at our transportation system. If Baker View's not functioning well, if Slater to the north isn't functioning well, it impacts all of the streets in our network. So, WashDOT has been very supportive. Right now, the mayor's part of an ongoing study that looks at Baker View to Grand View in the planning area on both the east and west of I-5. WashDOT's leading that effort with the Council of Governments. The mayor's on a steering committee. Staff is part of that. Others of you that are on the COG, represent the city in the COG, have been involved in that. So, I think the planning's setting us up for the transportation discussion, and that's really what we need to be doing.
So, then I guess the question to you, Tom and Ben, is I know there was an attempt to get a big unified statewide transportation package for this year. Is next year the year that might happen? And will you have opportunities to influence that for us?
The answer's yes. We will have opportunities. And, you know, it is being discussed and worked on as something for next year. There's no question about that. There is a large coalition in support of a major transportation revenue package. It didn't get through this time, but I think progress has been made. And as an aside, we do work closely with Tom Parker on behalf of Council of Governments to coordinate our efforts and understand where we're coming from. But I think it's gonna be difficult. There's gonna be a lot of revenue issues on the table, I think, because of some of the other demands for education, whether or not revenue has increased, general tax revenue is up in the air, we don't know. But if that's on the table, I think it makes it even more difficult to get people to think about a revenue package for transportation. But there's no question, there's still a lot of interest and a lot of work being done to position it for action next year.
Yeah, Mayor Kelly.
And it really helps if we have a unified front from our community, because then Tom and Ben don't have to be lobbying a whole bunch of different ways. There's more weight behind saying, "Fund our plan." And it actually happened last year where we potentially had a project added by a legislator instead of looking at what we'd all agree to. And Jack kind of took, Jack Laus took the leadership on this, said, "Please, you know, we've reached some consensus with everyone, go with that. It makes it much easier for the legislators when they don't have to pick, especially since they don't just represent Bellingham."
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you.
For Ben and Tom, I'm curious in regards to the raising the liquor tax and the allocation for cities for the marijuana tax. Was the biggest pushback on that because they want to hold money for education? Was that the biggest? Because I know there was a very large support for most of the cities for allocation on that funds. And I was, obviously, we're all disappointed it didn't go through, but I was curious what the biggest pushback was.
Well, I'll just briefly address that, and then Tom can put in what he knows about it, too. Like I said during the presentation, the biggest problem is everyone's looking forward to next year. And it wasn't a cities versus counties versus state issue. It didn't have anything to do with that. The two parties, the cities and counties, that actually sat down and determined what they were agreeable to in terms of sharing that revenue on a percentage basis. So, it wasn't a situation where it got lost there in those details. But every member of the legislature right now, as Tom had stated, all the members in the House are up for reelection, and half of the Senate is up for reelection. And so, the last thing they wanted to do was pass something that would put more pressure on them come 2015, when they have to write a two-year budget. They didn't want to agree to something that they might have to go back the next year and change again in terms to get some of that additional revenue to put towards the basic education decision. So, I think you basically said it correctly. Tom might have something to add to that, though.
I think that's a good summary. And I think there's some interplay with the marijuana revenue issue, you know, which got caught up in the consolidation of medicinal marijuana with recreational marijuana implementation. And that got real controversial. And part of the, you know, the question of revenue related to marijuana did interplay with some of the liquor discussions. And since that marijuana issue was not resolved, it took a lot of, the whole package off the table to some extent.
So, it ought to be a really good campaign issue to press our legislatures on to get a backbone and give us back the money they stole from an alcohol possession. That was an outright robbery, because the voters, when we passed, when they passed the liquor new proposition to sell in stores, it was very clear it was supposed to come back to us, and they just took that money. So, I don't consider it a gain by them not taking more. I just consider it gutless on the part of our legislatures, and I hope they watch, because we need to hold their feet to the fire on this stuff. You know, this is criminal on their part, because we have to enforce these laws that they put in place. And without the funding, you know, it's really hard to do that. And so, you know, I hope they're watching and make it a campaign issue. Yeah.
On that note, yes. I just want to extend a personal thank you to both of you. I was down a few times this session, and it can be, Olympia can be a confusing and intimidating place, and it's very comforting to know that the two of you are running around with our best interests in mind. best interests in mind and seeing you at work really puts a lot of confidence in me. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to move on to our next item in Committee of the Whole, which is an update on the Bellingham-Watcom County Commission Against Domestic Violence's work in the community. That didn't sound quite right. An update on the Bellingham-Watcom County Commission Against Domestic Violence and their work in the community. Thank you. The commission presents annually to City Council regarding domestic violence problems and trends and the efforts of the commission to address these issues. And this session will be our annual briefing. Today we have Susan Marks with us.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
My name is Susan Marks. I'm the Director of the Bellingham-Watcom County Commission Against Domestic Violence, or the Domestic Violence Commission, or DV Commission as I'll probably refer it to in the presentation because it's shorter. The first thing I'm going to say for those of you who've heard me speak before is I talk very fast. So I start out trying to talk a little slower and then I talk, I really think y'all should just try to keep up with me, but if you can't, feel free to wave your hand and I won't shame you for not listening as fast as I talk. So just a little history about the commission, whoops, that's how fast, that's really fast. A little history about the commission is we were formed in 1998. It was a joint resolution between the city of Bellingham and Watcom County. And so we have twenty-eight members and half are appointed by the county and half are appointed by the city. And then in 2006, all of the other municipalities in Watcom County passed ordinance of support. So really, our charge is to impact domestic violence countywide and serve all the jurisdictions within Watcom County. And our mission is to provide leaderships and the, leadership in the community's efforts to prevent and reduce domestic violence. And I think that mission is a little bit nebulous and it's important to be sure that we understand what that means. Our real focus is in improving our community response and our systems response to domestic violence, so we're kind of at that like thirty thousand foot level. And then to bring awareness to the entire community about domestic violence. So we have these twenty-eight commission members and we, they're all leaders in the community in some form. Some of them are leaders in the city and the county, some of them in business, education, healthcare. And they all come to this table, all of these twenty-eight people, and they're all representing all these different disciplines and they have all these points of view. And really, we come together and we talk about domestic violence and how we can make an impact and try to leave in a way that really makes us, so we can make some real change happen, that we're trying to be united when we leave that table together. And we really have made some difference here in Watcom County in domestic violence. We have been recognized nationally for some of our work and some of our best practices that we've implemented here in the county. And we have received federal grants since 2005 that have brought in almost $2 million just to address domestic violence here in the county. And we've seen numbers of domestic violence incidents decrease in some of our measurements. So that's all been hopeful to us. Unfortunately, there still is a long way to go and I'm going to talk a little bit about that later. So from the city of Bellingham, our commission members, Chief Cook, Peter Raffado and Darlene Peterson, just because of the positions that they hold, get to be commission members. And then these other seven or six people are appointed by the city. And so Darla Woolman works for the Family Care Network, Michael Sledge is at Western Washington, Taryn Nevis with Law Advocates, Sherry Emerson with the Opportunity Council, Greg Winter with the Homeless Service Center, Rick Qualls is a pastor at a local church. So again, you can see where we have representatives from different disciplines and all of them are leaders within those agencies. So sometimes when I come, I talk about several different projects they're working on, but this year I really wanted to focus on one of our major projects over the past year, which has been a Watcom County Domestic Violence Fatality Review. And this is when I said we've made difference in a lot of measurements. Unfortunately, this is an area where we have not, in our county, had as great of an impact on Watcom County homicides. The Washington State Coalition Against Domestic Violence has been keeping track of intimate partner homicides, intimate partner fatalities since 1997. And in Watcom County, in most years, we would find zero, one, at the most, two fatalities and that would be a lot for us. And between 2005 and 2008, there were zero intimate partner fatalities. And then in 2009, 2010 combined, there were six intimate partner fatalities and then we've had one every year since. And because of these fatalities, this was actually right as I was coming into this community and taking this position that this was happening. And I remember very clearly that the commission members, when I first started, all of them saying, "This is what we want to focus on. We want to find out why in two years have we had so many people die?" And those deaths ranged from, there was a one-year-old who was killed by a woman's intimate partner, up to a fifty-five-year-old who was killed by her intimate partner. So it spanned the ages of people and it, you know, Bellingham, Watcom County, outside of, you know, this, in rural areas in a smaller city. So again, it didn't seem to be like a pattern in that way. And so we just want to see, is there some sort of pattern and what can we do? Because this is really concerning to have this many people die in a community this small. And we were actually, in I think 2010, we were only behind King County and Pierce County for the number of homicides related to partner fatalities. And we should not be up that high based just on our numbers and also on the work that we've done on this issue. So we pulled together a panel, this process took over a year. We pulled together a panel of, there are more than fifty people and they represented every discipline you can think of, criminal justice, civil justice, schools, child protection, faith community, just general community members. And we looked at three different intimate partner homicide cases. We chose three cases from among those that had happened since 2009. And then we found as much information as we could about those cases. So there's public record, law enforcement reports, courts, prosecution files, media reports. We were able to, we got permission to get child protection files, we were able to look at child protective services cases. And then the most interesting thing is in each case, we reached out to family and other partners and asked if any of them wanted to be interviewed. And in one case, we had the former partner of the perpetrator come forward and she let us interview her. And then in another case, we had the mother and sister of the victim come forward and they let us interview them. So we were able to bring that really personal experience in. And I'll just say, especially interviewing that former partner was one of the most enlightening things that I have ever done and moving because this woman barely survived the person who killed his next partner and she knew it. And just all that she was able to share about what it was like to be in a relationship with someone who would then do an attempted homicide and then complete a homicide was really, I think, useful for all of us, just that intimate knowledge of that. So our findings were, the number one finding is really exciting, I think, which is that we, so as a team, all of these fifty people came together, we looked at these cases and developed some, found gaps and recommendations and kind of came to consensus about our major findings. And the one is that overall, we think that domestic violence homicide is preventable in Watcom County. And going forward, that's very exciting. Looking backwards, it made us ask, well then what happened? Why, then there's all these people who've died as a result of domestic violence that we didn't prevent it. So what did we do wrong as a community? And there were these three things that we found were missing and it just kind of, so happens that they fell along the lines of the abuser, the survivor, and the community as a whole. And the first one is that it was appalling to us that abusers were just never really held accountable for their actions. And that was in the criminal justice system, that was in the family court system and child custody cases and divorce cases. We saw them with child protective services and the schools, just how they were pretty much always getting their way. Anything that they asked for, they were almost always getting what they asked for. And a lot of that is because this is what they do, is they manipulate people and there's studies that show that almost always the abuser's more likable than the survivor. So when we're talking about all these different systems and the abuser's presenting themselves and the survivor is, the abuser was the one who presented best. And oftentimes, they had more money, they had attorneys, and they had resources and they were able to present themselves in a way that brought people onto their side. So we really found like this, this was a huge gap for us. And an example is in one case, this was in the city of Bellingham, there was a, one month before the homicide, there was a domestic violence verbal call for service and the Bellingham Police Department responded to that scene. And they, the police department actually did a wonderful job with the case. And they arrested the perpetrator and the victim was telling him, "I, I think he's going to kill me, I'm pretty sure he's going to kill me." And the police believed her and so they arrested him, but unfortunately, because of the way the law is, there was not a domestic violence crime in that evening, there was no physical assault. And so he spent one night in jail for obstructing officers in their investigation and was out and a month later killed her. And we had no system in place, and I'll talk a little later about a system we now have in place to maybe help that not happen again, but at that time, we had no system in place for them to know that something was going to happen. And actually, their supervisor talked to them before we reviewed that case and they both said that they still remember that case and they remember just her saying that and them feeling like the hairs on the back of their neck sticking up and saying, "This is going to happen." And then not being able to, all they could do is arrest him that one time. The second thing that we found was that survivors can't stop their abuse on their own. We had a lot of things that we wish the victims would have done that they didn't do, but overall, they did most of the things that we would tell them to do. They called 911, they got protection orders, they left their partners, they filed for divorce, they tried to get custody, they did everything that we would tell them. And they couldn't get safe because a lot of times, they did not have the community's support behind them, they were trying to do this on their own. And again, they were telling people too, they were telling their pastors and their friends and their schools and, and people weren't doing what they needed to do to help survivors get safe. And a corollary is that this, these homicides had an impact on our entire community and therefore, we all had to be there for these survivors before, before they became victims. And the final thing is that, this kind of goes with both of them, is that there were a lot of people who knew about the abuse, but they didn't said nothing to stop it. We really found that the social circles around these people knew what was going on. A lot of, there was one where the guy said that he was the cousin of the perpetrator and he had been asked for a gun and he thought stopping it was not giving this guy a gun. He never told anyone else that he was asked for a gun and he knew what he intended to use it for. He thought, "Why didn't give him the gun?" So now that's the end of the issue. So there were things where people just, they didn't know effectively how to stop it. And specifically, people who work with children, schools and child protective services, we found that people would say there was something wrong, he was really intense, I didn't like to interact with him, I didn't want to stand up with him or stand up to him. So they weren't knowing what were the effective, they weren't either naming as domestic violence or doing the effective things they need to do to stop it. And all of these, there are recommendations that we came up with to hopefully fix all of these situations. So we came up with over, wait, I think I skipped one again. Yeah, we came up with over seventy recommendations for our county, wrote a whole report, it's like a fifty-page report that's on our website. And we prioritized twelve different recommendations that we thought were most important. But they're recommendations literally for everyone, that for just the general people in the community, family, friends and neighbors, I hope most of us in this room and in Watcom County fit in at least one of these categories. Faith-based communities, neighborhood associations, civil criminal justice, mental health, healthcare, social service, employers, coworkers, businesses, housing across the board, housing, property management, real estate, and then schools and child protection. That there literally is a recommendation for whatever your field is and whatever you, your relationships are. And so some of the key recommendations, and these are all ones that we're working on now, and there's some other ones working on, but these are kind of the biggest ones and the ones that I thought would be most interesting. The lethality assessment program, this actually kicked off in January and this is the one that will fix that problem with the DV verbals where, so law enforcement throughout Watcom County, now when they go to the scene of domestic violence crime, they have this eleven-page, or eleven-page, it's eleven questions checklist that they ask victims. And if the victim screens in, she can ask, answer yes to one of three questions such as, "Has he ever threatened to kill you?" Or a tally of four to these other kind of social indicators of lethality. The victim screens in, they will at that moment connect the victim on the phone to the domestic violence and sexual assault services. So they will be on the phone with domestic violence advocates right then to start safety planning and to start making whatever plan is needed for the future. And then DV SASS will continue to follow up with any victim who's identified, even if they say they don't want to talk on the phone that night, even if they say they don't want advocacy, DV SASS is committed to continuing to reach out to that victim over time to make sure that she's connected to services. And then that screen also goes to the prosecutor's office so they can see when they're making charging decisions, who is at highest risk for committing a homicide. And this is, program has been tried nationally and has shown to drastically reduce homicides because it really is indicating, not if there's domestic violence, but if there's lethal domestic violence. And then we're starting a corollary to that is a domestic violence high-risk team, which this will be focused on the offender. So the lethality assessment program is about connecting the survivor to services. And this high-risk team is about identifying those offenders who are the most lethal and who are committing the highest levels of violence and having this team of professionals who are representing primarily criminal justice field, monitoring that person and paying attention to what they get, every time they get arrested for something, every time if they break, you know, protection order, if they're having contact with the victim, if they're making threats, whatever that is, that information can come into the team and together, people can make more informed decisions about how to hold that offender accountable. And then I'll just quickly kind of give, so this bias intervention toolkit is about, we're coming up with a resource manual and training for community members on how to intervene in domestic violence safely. So if you are a friend or family member or neighbor and you think something's going on, what are the things you can do to try to make it safer for that victim? Because again, that was kind of a missing piece for people. And we're working with schools, we have a grant with the Ferndale School District, school district right now to do prevention, education and setting up policies and procedures in the school system. And we're continuing to work with them and we've actually just written a grant to try to expand that into the Blaine School District and we eventually want to take that countywide. We're working with DV SASS to put on advocacy training for faith-based communities so that pastors and other people in churches will understand about how to identify domestic violence, how to support victims, and then how to refer victims on for further services from DV SASS if they need to. And then this one, we're talking about the legislative session. This session, the Washington State Legislature passed a law that makes it, actually, there's a federal law that passed in the nineties, I think, that makes it so if you have a domestic violence protection order against you, you generally cannot possess a firearm. There's a few exceptions, but in general, you cannot. And there was never a state law correlating to that, most states don't have one, which makes it really hard for local law enforcement to enforce that protection order. So what they can do if they find out you have a protection order and you have a firearm, they can forward that to a federal agency, but that is not a local response. So this, we've just passed a state law that now makes it the same as the federal law. So now local agencies, we'll be working over the next six months with local agencies to help put in place processes so that that will be able to happen here and so that local law enforcement can accept surrenders of firearms from people who should not have them. And firearms was a huge thing we found too, that without a gun, it's a lot harder, it's just makes someone, that impulse to kill someone, there's another extra step, but the gun is so quick that in most of the Watcom County homicides, a firearm has been involved. So in sum, as I said, there are recommendations that apply to everyone, those are just some ones we're working on in our current system. So what we're asking the community to do, and I would encourage each of you to do it, is to read the report and to identify those recommendations that apply to you and implement those in your life or sphere of influence. And even if it's, that's just one recommendation and say, you know, "I'm going to learn about what our local services are, so if I know someone, I know what to refer them to," or "I'm going to support a policy or a procedure being put in place here in my workplace," or whatever that is. And for help in implementing those recommendations, that is part of what I'm here for, is to help other people besides the initiatives that we're leading, but to help other people put those recommendations in place. There are several agencies that are working on their own and putting some of those in place and I'm kind of supporting them on that. So that's the website where you can find our report, it's on dvcommission.org under Resources. And then if anyone has any questions or comments, I got through that pretty quickly, right?
Great, thank you so much, Susan. My first question, this fatality report?
Yes.
Is that fatality review, is that a brand-new thing that was conducted last year or this year?
It was new in Watcom County, they've been doing them statewide, but we're the only, we're the first county in the state that decided, we didn't want statewide recommendations because they're not specific enough, we wanted county-specific recommendations. So we looked at county cases and came up with recommendations that would work in our county.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, questions or comments for Susan? Kelly?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, yes. I sent the, just that one page just kind of summarizes those findings, I could email it to Marie and she could get out to people? Yeah.
That'd be great. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael had one last comment.
Well, in case it isn't clear to the members of the public, Watcom County really is a leader in Washington State because we have been borrowing from leaders in other states and adopting best practices and that, that's part of where the fatality review and the high-risk offender identification programs come from. So I think we should be really pleased with the DV Commission helping to provide that leadership.
Yeah, definitely, good comment.
And thank you all for continuing to support us and fund us and appoint people and let us do our work.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, moving on into our third out of four items today, we've got a work session on business and occupation tax related to nonprofit healthcare providers. Council direction to staff was to work with Peace Health to gain an understanding of their proposal and to present this information to council. The attached memo provides three alternatives for our consideration and we are being asked to provide direction today. Turn it over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian Henshaw, Finance Department. And Matt Stamps are, we're both here to answer questions. Just a quick overview, I included some of the information in your packet for review. We've been talking about this for several months and I just want to just say, for business tax, it is a tax levied on gross receipts of a business. And then it's imposed by both the city and the county. And the city and state both have deductions and exemptions. Our tax codes are similar, but not the same. And when we apply these, we try to apply them uniformly and across all industry by class. Some of the criteria that we've used to review the municipal code is equity among all entities by classification, both the complexity to administer and for compliance by those that have to register and pay their business taxes. And also, we're trying to prevent and mitigate unintended consequences from a change to the municipal code without fully comprehending what that would mean for all of the people And also, we were trying to prevent and mitigate unintended consequences from a change to the municipal code without fully comprehending what that would mean for all of the people that have to use it to report. So since January twenty-seventh, work session, staff has met and exchanged information with Peace Health. I think it's been an informed discussion and clarification, both on our part and their part, as far as the medical industry, how it's changing, the impacts, what it would mean for them to have to report to us. We've continued to research options and best practices and alternatives, and we've tried to get to a point where we could come back to you, explain some of the pros and cons of each of the proposals. We weren't successful in getting it down to just two, and I'll go into that in just a second. So you have three proposals in your packet, and I'll go through those very high, high level and quickly. And then we do want to get further direction on this, so that we can have a public hearing and hopefully come to a conclusion. In your packet, you'll see that the, back in November, council direction was to staff to draft the ordinance that would repeal the religious provider exemption and adopt healthcare preferences in the state BNO tax code. And that one is included in your packet. And then since the last meeting and through the iterative process with Peace Health, the proposal in your packet dated April fourteenth also replaces the religious provider exemption, but it replaces it with a nonprofit hospital exemption. And then their proposal would say that they would tax, pay taxes on the clinic revenues. And so the third proposal in the packet is, it also repeals a religious provider exemption, but we would like to get to a target level of revenue, if that's council's direction, through exemptions or deductions rather than through definitions. And we can talk more about that. But very quickly, the pros and cons of each proposal are in your packet, and we're here to answer any questions about those if you have any.
Okay, Jean.
Yes, Brian, under the Peace Health proposal one, it says, "In tax clinic revenue," you talking about all their other holdings that they have purchased over the years? Is that what that is?
Yeah. And I'll speak for Peace Health. Through our meetings, they do reporting on those and internally, by definition and in reporting software, they've broken out the clinic revenue, and that's their proposal basically to replace it.
And would that apply to any new acquisitions in the future?
Well, that would need to be determined, and that would be a policy decision that you guys could implement if that so shows.
Okay.
Did we say that, that once we reached a certain point, we were going to have a public hearing on this?
Mm-hmm.
I thought someone said, "Public hearing."
Yes.
Well, Brian did.
Yeah. All through these discussions, we, we were, and I think the mayor has, has said that we would take this to a public hearing before it was implemented. So we'd like to get it down to one proposal, if that's possible, with your decision, and if not, two, but we can't have the proposals, too many proposals at a public hearing, so.
Michael.
I appreciate your discussions with Peace Health and coming up with alternatives, and your creativity in coming up with this last option. However, I'm kind of uncomfortable with it. I don't think we should be setting policy based on revenue targets. I just, that personally makes me uncomfortable. I think we'd rather stick to principles and definitions, because that, in my mind, is a way to fairly apply the law to all people similarly situated. We just need to figure out what situations, what definitions we want to apply. So personally, I would argue against the last option and still favor probably the first option.
Kelly.
Yeah, one of our, one of the things that we had talked about is ease of administration for the city, and that's why the third proposal's there. That's, and that's the only reason, because it lines up with the principle of what Peace Health had, you know, had acquired. So we didn't come up with the, with the dollar figure first, we, the dollar figure was derived based on the purchase of the clinics, and we just looked at ease of administration. So it was ease of administration that met the same goal as what the hospital had wanted to do. So it wasn't, we weren't just going for revenue, we were looking for meeting both the goals because the Peace Health proposal is not easily to, easy to administer. So that was, that was the goal of coming up with the third one.
That sounds much better, but then I'm, my question, if you don't mind, would be, I don't, why is that easy to administer, that third percentage multiplier option? Why is that easy? Who, how is it easy?
I can let Brian answer that.
It stays to the premise of a gross receipts tax and doesn't get into an entity or a definition of revenue.
Okay.
So it would apply to everybody uniformly, anybody that is a medical service provider would be at X rate.
Terry.
Well, I kind of agree with, with Michael on, on the direction anyway of the proposal that we had made before, the draft ordinance, and do feel the council should move forward on that based on the first option, the one that we had brought forward. And I haven't seen anything that changes my mind with that. If we, it's felt that it needs to go to a hearing, then I feel that's what we should be moving on.
Jean, did you?
Well, one, one of the things that's brought this forward, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the facts, the fact that when they purchased Majona Medical and then purchased other facilities, there was lost revenue there. So I don't have a problem with the second option being part of the public hearing either, because I have to be honest with you, you know, sure, you look on paper, three hundred and fifty thousand versus one point two million, but as far as I was concerned, as long as they kept purchasing other clinics, other doctors' offices, other facilities, that was all lost revenue there. I have no problem with taking a good, hard look at the Peace Health proposal too, so that's where I'm at.
Jack.
So Brian, under number three, is it to set up a formula so that you, you establish what the basis is of what the lost revenue would be from an acquisition, and then keep that number, you know, until it gets adjusted? Or, I mean, what happens if there's like a, a slow creep of, of services within that particular clinic where, you know, they may end up, you know, increasing five percent a year, both their revenue and the, and the size of their, their clinic? Is it set as a base, or, or are there adjustments that are done annually?
We could do either. I think what we need is further clarification to write the ordinance for council policy for what you would like to do. That has been at least part of the conversations in, in the past several months about lost revenue. But the point is, is that we can get to that through deductions, exemptions, or a rate or a combination thereof, but we can't make every option into an ordinance. So if, if that's the way council would like to go for, it could, I mean, I gave the range, it could really literally be from zero onwards, so, but we need to know what you're trying to achieve, and then we would figure out the best way to do that using the same type of criteria, equity, fairness, ease to administer, complexity, all of those things that would go into it. But it's a kind of a chicken or an egg until we know which way you're trying to go. We've already developed the one ordinance, so that's done, but to, to go any further, we, we have to know where you're, what you're trying to achieve.
And that's, that's the reason why I was asking the question, was that, you know, there are comments about the third one being easy to administer, but it really depends on exactly what we're administering.
Yeah.
You know, because there could be escalators in there.
The, the key differential is the definition of including an exemption for a hospital or not, and then the definition of the revenue that would be included. And we can get there through two or three, but three is definitely easier and not only to administer, but to apply uniformly to all providers. We're not into entity definitions and reporting.
Mayor, Kelly.
And I think that was the point that I wanted to make, is number two is not as equitable as number three. As far as if the idea is that we want to do what Jean was talking about, which is capture the lost revenue from the clinic acquisition, then if we want to be equitable to the other providers, which I thought I heard people talk about, so C-Mart, Interfaith, the other people that do this, we would just have a new classification of tax, and we would apply it to everybody, and that way we wouldn't, I think that's what Brian was trying to explain. We can do it any way you want, but if, if it's easier if you guys agree on what goals you want, and maybe equity is not a goal, then we can do something easier, or maybe simplicity of, of administration is not a goal, then, then those things don't matter. But that's, those are the goals that I thought we had talked about. They're certainly goals that I feel strongly about, especially equity. But I don't think there's any reason to create something too complicated to implement either, if we can make it simpler.
Terry.
But from the way I read this, number one provides equity among all nonprofit healthcare providers, all subject to same rate deductions, administrative efficiency, it hits those things. And I don't think this is one harder to administer than three?
No, I think we were meaning two was harder to administer.
Well, I, I know that, I'm not even, you know, I didn't see that as a.
So, yeah. Counsel direction was the first proposal, which we did. And then at the last meeting, you directed us to go explore with Peace Health another option. And that's what we've done.
Right, but the third was now thrown in again.
Well, and that's only because we didn't find one thing that worked exactly right for us and Peace Health. That's why we did a two and a three. But today, we need hopefully to get down to two or one.
Pinky and then Michael.
What question, does Interfaith pay the BNO tax right now?
They do. Thank you.
I think one of the advantages of going with route one and piggybacking on to the state is, if you look at this, the state's legislation, and they provide a very clear policy rationale for exactly why some things are exempt and other things are not. I mean, like I said last time, I think a lot of our work has already been done for us by the state legislature. I think Terry hit it, this is pretty darn equitable, pretty darn easy to administer, it already has policy justification. I'm still hearing about number three in ways that sound to me more complex. It's not, I'm not seeing any advantages, I'm seeing maybe potential disadvantages, that we have to have potential variety of mechanisms yet to be decided, to achieve a goal yet to be decided. We're not, we're nowhere near number three, and number one is pretty much done. I, I still think I'd like to go ahead with number one and hold a hearing on it.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, so, would you like to make a motion, Michael?
I'd make a motion that we schedule a hearing, a public hearing, to consider ordinance for option number one, as written in our packets today at the earliest convenient time.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna practice something that I've been asked to work on, which is repeating the motion. So Michael has moved that we schedule a public hearing on proposal number one as written in our packets, and that we do so at our earliest convenience. Did I do that right? Okay. And Terry has seconded. Okay, I did that right. So we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Jean.
I'm gonna vote no, because I, I haven't made up my mind. I'm not predicated on number one or number two, and I want to have that option when we have the public hearing, so. I mean, I'm not gonna, I haven't made up my mind yet, so I won't be supporting.
Okay. Michael?
One of the requests from the staff was that they wanted to have a hearing on one and only proposal, but it seemed confusing to put out more than one. But is it possible at the hearing that we will still hear about option two and three? I mean, it's not written off the table completely. I don't know, how do, how do, I, our problem is that we've stayed with two, too wide, too long. I think we need to focus it down and have a hearing on something.
Terry.
At a public hearing, as we well know, people will speak about what they want to speak on, and I'm assuming Peace Health representatives will probably speak on issues that they would like to see, so I think we will get it, but I, difference of opinion on it, but I do feel I'd like to start with number one and go from there.
Jean.
I understand that, but you're gonna be making up your mind, either it's number one or nothing. I mean, if you're gonna let, if people are gonna speak on, on number two, I don't know why it wouldn't be part of it. But anyway, I've already said, well, I'm gonna vote the one I'm gonna vote. Because I do remember when this first came up, and it came up in two thousand and six, the biggest concern was acquisition of other medical facilities. So in here, they will be taxed, and I would assume in future years, any more acquisition, they'll be taxed also, so that's.
Kelly.
I do think, I agree with, with Terry. I, I do think that it's easier to have one proposal that's coming forward and testimony on that proposal. It makes it easier to have some focus. So regardless of which one you pick, if the motion is to pick number one, I do think there'll be testimony on all the other aspects too, and it, it, it make, I think it makes a little teeny bit simpler.
Terry?
Yeah. Jean, the perfect example was the work session we had today on Alabama Hill Corridor. We had one main idea presented at the public hearing, but that's not what we'd heard testimony for, and at this point, you know, the committee is looking at, you know.
But it has about seven aspects to it, though, it's not just one issue.
Well.
That's a little different than this.
You know.
You know, I understand what you're saying.
But, you know, we don't know which way it's going to go before it's done. It might be that, but.
Before we vote, I'm just gonna ask Jean, in your vast experience.
Yes.
Do you have any ideas for an alternative option here? I mean, we have to choose something and hold a public hearing.
No, I'm, I'm in between one or two, that's why I said what I said, but that's, that's fine.
Okay. We're gonna vote then. So, Marie, would you do me the favor of repeating the motion?
To recommend approval to schedule a public hearing on proposal number one as written in the packet.
Thank you. At our earliest convenience. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six, one with Knutson in opposition. Thank you very much. And we have one final item of business here. Okay, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Noel Communications. Noel Communications, Inc. is a Washington corporation and has applied for a telecommunications franchise in March of this year for the purpose of providing network telephone service and telecommunications infrastructure services. The application was reviewed by city staff in legal, public works, and information technology and services departments for compliance with code requirements, and we've got a recommendation to approve.
Good afternoon, everybody. Noel Communications first contacted the city about this franchise application late last year. They actually contracted with the city to lease some of our dark fiber on the city's fiber optic network. And what they'd like to do at this point is connect to the city's network to provide services to end users that are located off the fiber ring. So in order to lay that infrastructure within the right of way, we determined that they would need a franchise for that. We entered into a kind of preliminary negotiations with them and worked with Noel on drafting the franchise ordinance that's before you. It is substantially similar to the franchise ordinances that are already in place for other telecom providers within the city, which is required by federal law. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about the agreement, the business relationship or anything that I can answer today.
Okay, Michael?
I have two questions, uh, excuse me, sorry about that. I have two questions, James. First one is, do we have any latitude on what the fee is, or is that set by some regulations? And the second one, is this franchise, city-wide franchise, and is that how all franchises work to be city-wide, or are they sometimes geographically defined differently?
Yes, thank you. With respect to the first question, we actually can't set a franchise fee on a telecommunications franchise. State law prohibits us from setting a franchise fee. For that reason, Noel Communications will be paying a utility tax, a six percent utility tax. So it's not exactly a fee, it's a tax, and that will be the same. So, it's not exactly a fee, it's a tax, and that will be the same tax as all similarly situated telecom providers within the city, 6%. And with respect to the second question, yes, all franchises are, to my knowledge, citywide franchise for operating within the right of way would, would operate on the right of way throughout the city.
Jack.
So, James, you said that they will be using our, our fiber network?
That's correct.
And so, are we, are we going to continue to have a suitable capacity afterwards?
Yes, I worked with both Clark Williams and Marty Mulholland on reviewing this franchise, and this does not in any way negatively impact our fiber needs on our own network.
Okay, I mean, like even in a situation where we decided that we wanted to do something in the future, from the city's point of view of providing additional services to, you know, to our citizens or businesses?
That has not been identified as a problem at this point.
Okay.
It's a good question, but nobody's identified that as a problem, or a potential problem.
You know, I guess, you know, does our fiber network, can it be expanded to be able to, to incorporate additional capacity?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay, just by putting more fiber in, right?
We could do that, but I think we still have significant amount of unused fiber within the conduit at this point. I mean, the, the amount of pairs that are in there now are so substantial for what our needs are, that there's excess capacity.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommend approval of this ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Noel Communications. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Neil? Let's see, what have we got next minutes? We've got one set of minutes to approve today.
Move approval. Second.
Are these from April 7th? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes passed unanimously. Any old or new business? Jack?
I passed out to the council a, a response to Alan Mariner's memo to us referring to what the county's, what the county's responses to dealing with non-UGA growth projections. And my understanding is that, that, you know, that the proposal, proposed resolution's still coming to the council, but I, I guess I just want to reemphasize that I really believe that the, the county's growth rate in the non-UGA area is substantial. It's three times the rate that is occurring in the city of Bellingham, and I'm not sure what it is in the other cities. I'd still like to try and get that information from the county staff, but it is a three times the, the rate that's going on in the city, and we need to figure out ways of being able to, to level that playing field, because it's, it has a tremendous number of other impacts on both the county and also in the city when, when we have growth in the wrong spots. That's, just, it's a comment.
Okay. I'm, I'm, for one, I'm certainly with you on the impact fee question. Definitely.
I want to thank you for sending that memo. That is good.
Sure.
Okay, any other old or new business?
The mayor.
Yes, Mayor Kelly?
Yes, and I appreciate what Jack said. We're, we are following up on the, on the resolution that was requested. I, I want to make sure that we also have that discussion about Bellingham growth rate, too, because with growth management, there's a certain expectation about urban growth, you know, within the urban boundaries also, so I think it's probably twofold, what we take and what the county takes, so, just to clarify.
Do you have any thoughts about how we should pursue having that conversation?
No, it's just that, that doing the resolution and, and asking the county to do something, I think is, is fine, but then we also turn around and look at, like Jack's, Jack's suggestion about whether they're urban villages or opportunity zones, or whatever it is, and impact fees, and what we can do to make sure that we're doing the kind of infill that we need to do, too. That's all.
Yeah, okay. I'm only smiling, I was just thinking, yeah, it's always a nice touch to point out the log in our own eye before pointing to the spec in our neighbors. Okay, any other old or new business? I have two housekeeping things, but, okay, um, one is, I was just checking in with Mark recently, and he was giving me a recap on the energy working group that Pinky and Michael are working on, and it reminded me that we have a couple of other working groups on council, and I just thought I would throw out there and inquire as to whether or not those are really working groups, if they're working, and if they need anything from the council in terms of direction, we have a, or if they've concluded. We have a PEG TV working group that's Jack and Jean. A Lake Walkin' Policy Group is on here, which is Pinky and Roxanne, and we all know you're doing that, and then a Parking Solutions Group, which is Terry and Jack. Jack?
I can report on the PEG one, at least unless Jean wants to, but the mayor had indicated a couple of meetings, either last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, that, and I've talked with her since, that she's about ready to come forward to, to the working group and present the results of, of the last discussion that we had, which was probably about a month and a half ago or so. So, that's, that's continuing. As far as the Parking Solutions Group, we have not met, but the, if you remember back from the Transportation Benefit District Board meeting that we had last week that I wasn't at, the TC went and mentioned that they are currently working on, on some parking issues, and they were, I think at their next meeting, next, next month, they will be voting on recommendations to bring to the council soon. So, there should be at least one, if not more, recommendations to come, either to the working group or to the full council.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Jack. My only other item was just a reminder, I think today, what I witnessed this morning in committee and then this afternoon, was some really great discussion. And just a reminder to all of us that if we have policy recommendations to be maybe even aggressive about bringing them forward to the council body as a whole, and arguing their merits for getting referred to committee, and we can robustly move things through committee. We've, I've heard some council members saying things felt a little light lately, so just wanted to remind all of us that we do have that mechanism, and it does work when we use it, so just a reminder, friendly reminder to all of us to get our work done that way if we would like to. It's there for a reason. Okay, and with that, if there's nothing else anyone wants to add, we're going to adjourn to executive session. We have one item, which is potential litigation, and it should be 15 minutes. I just have one in my...
Yeah, me, too.
Yeah, just to clarify for the agenda, the one that made it onto the schedule has been canceled.
Oh, okay.
There was an addition that's still going forward, which they have the same title, but this one is Shane Brady for 20 minutes.
Okay, so 20 minutes. I'll be back. It's 3 o'clock, so I will reconvene at 3:20.